Good evening, everyone. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have all members present. Our student board member is also present. We do have a quorum at this time. I call on Board Member Mike Guessford to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Southard. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion, any questions about the agenda? All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. Student member concurs. We have approval of the agenda. We'll move now to approval of the minutes.
President Williams.
I move to approve the minutes of the work session dated Tuesday, December 21, 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the December 21 work session? All those in favor of approval of the minutes? Okay, we have six. Any abstentions? One abstention. Student member concurs with the affirmative votes. Mrs. Murray, do you have more?
Yes, I'm sorry.
President Williams, I move for the approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, December 21, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes of December 21, 2021? All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have six affirmatives. Motion carries. That set of minutes has been approved.
President Williams.
I move for the approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, December 21, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the business meeting dated December 21, 2021? All those in favor? We have six affirmatives. Any abstentions? One abstention. Student member concurs. The affirmative, that set of minutes has been approved.
President Williams.
I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, January 4, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes dated January 4, 2022? All those in favor? All right, we have seven votes. Those minutes are approved.
Williams, I move for the approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, January 4, 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the business meeting dated January 4, 2022? All those in favor of approval? We have seven affirmative, and the student member concurs. Those minutes have been approved as well. Thank you. This is the portion of our meeting where we have public comment. I'd like to read from Policy KD regarding public comment. Persons desiring to speak at such public -- oh, I'm sorry. Caught the wrong one. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. The chairperson reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on any particular topic provided the issue in question has been presented, and further comments would simply be repetitious. Following a speaker's presentation, the superintendent may designate a staff member to address that individual's concern, or may ask the speaker to contact a particular department or a particular staff member at an appropriate time. At this time, we have one person who has signed up in advance, and that is Mr. Neil Becker. Mr. Becker?
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael and staff. Start tonight with a thank you. Thank you for the calendar modification that the board took action on recently. That provided much-needed and very much appreciated planning time for educators in the buildings so that they could do what's needed to provide the top-tier instruction that our students deserve. I know that time on Friday was appreciated and put to good use. During our last meeting in January, Board Member Evans commented on how speedily the Washington County Association of Administrators and Supervisors wrapped up negotiations with the Board of Education. Dr. Michael responded to Mr. Evans' questions and comments, and I too reached out to Mr. Evans via email. But tonight, I'm adding a little bit more on that topic, including the role the county commissioners play within negotiations. The administrators and supervisors unit is a meet-and-confer unit, as Dr. Michael shared. In short, they don't have collective bargaining rights. And as a result, that association, WACAS, discusses salary in contract language as superintendent, lands at a number, and they work that out in that format. The A&amp;S employees do not negotiate in the traditional form of the word. As a result, they usually complete their salary discussions very quickly, and in this case, they landed at a reasonable salary agreement and some contract modifications aimed to improve the working conditions for administrators. The process is different for the Washington County Educational Support Personnel and the Washington County Teachers Association. WCESP and WCTA are actually organized collective bargaining units affiliated with the Maryland State Education Association and have collective bargaining rights. As a result, the negotiations process is more formal, and usually it's more time-consuming. We actually started several months ago with some initial meetings, and we met recently, and we meet again on Thursday. It is a bit more time-consuming. It's always the goal of WCTA to complete negotiations quickly. What often hamstrings the process, it's not WCTA and it's not WCBOE. It's the unwillingness of the county commissioners to fund the Washington County Public Schools and the Washington County Board of Education budget, forcing at times WCBOE to withdraw or reduce salary proposals. Next month, the board will adopt the superintendent's budget, accept public comments, and forward that budget to the Board of County Commissioners, which has been perennially labeled as low effort by the state of Maryland. In recent years, after a quick finish, the A&amp;S unit has actually been forced to return to the table with Dr. Michael and the BOE to sign new agreements after the board budget was underfunded, as it usually is, by the county commissioners. Underfunding is a sad reality which is leading to a staffing crisis in WCPS. Similar to the issues the Sheriff's Department was facing, educators are going elsewhere. A&amp;S personnel, teachers, support staff are leaving WCPS for other districts, or they're not coming at all. They're leaving and going to other government agencies or the private sector. It's incumbent upon the commissioners that they fully fund the WCPS budget so that when we negotiate and we land at an agreement, it can actually be funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this time? Good evening, Mr. Lowen. Mr. Lowen, you've spoken before. You know that Mr. Bickford is our timekeeper.
Yes.
You're well aware of the process.
Yes.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. My name is Ethan Lowen, and just I know that there's constant talk, for a very good reason, about COVID, and just wanted to just go over some observations here. But we are now in the 12th week since the increase in cases started on October 24. During that time, COVID cases have increased 1,100% nationally, while ICU admissions for COVID have increased 45%, and deaths from COVID have increased 14%. If these trends hold, then we are looking at COVID, along with all nine of its variants that are continuing to circulate freely, taking on the same mortality as the average flu. However, it will be another 10 days before that statement can be said with confidence. Regardless, this is a fantastic development for us adults, but how does that relate to the children? And it doesn't, since the children have been almost entirely unaffected by COVID since day one. COVID has had less of an impact on the children than the swine flu pandemic had on those children in 2009. The swine flu came through when my children attended this county schools. Nationally, 1,090 children died from the swine flu in just one year. Throughout all of COVID, 710 children have died. And other than us parents keeping each other informed as to when our children got it, their lives were not interrupted at all. The difference between the 2009 pandemic and this pandemic is that for this one, the children's lives have been deeply disturbed. For most children, the public schools are the third or fourth most influential aspect of their life, and over the last two years, no aspect of their lives, for the majority, have been turned inside out and upside down more than school has. And the only thing that can result in is what we have been witnessing. Five months ago, when the parents began speaking in front of this board, they rarely spoke about educational issues. Rather, they spoke about how desperately the kids need the schools to return to normal because what has been happening to their children in school has been wearing down their children's self-confidence, parent after parent, in various ways of saying that exact same thing. Three months after that, the teachers began showing up to this board and resigning amidst stories of the most incredible misbehavior from elementary students in particular I've ever heard from that age group. What the parents warned of and what so many teachers have since described as a chaotic situation to downplay the intensity that the teachers actually described it as, it's the same problem. Therefore, improving the working conditions of teachers and rebuilding the confidence of students begins in the same place. Of course, there is no magic bullet that will fix every problem. Teacher compensation and school counselors need to be addressed. Students that are one or even two years behind need to be addressed. Parents not prioritizing their children's school attendance needs to be addressed. However, there is no amount of resources that can be thrown at any of those issues that will have a meaningful impact if we do not first provide the basic foundation of an educational environment, which is an environment that provides safety inconsistently. Tragically, we are about to enter year three of this with no end in sight. Two weeks ago, some of the most influential people in public education put forth this proposal that the current state of public schools will continue for however long it takes for vaccines to be approved for all age groups and for vaccine mandates to be enforced no later than one school semester after vaccine approval. That standard is anti-science, and it's not a plan. It just continues a troubled school experience with masking and distancing rules that leads to kids getting suddenly kicked out of school for one or two weeks at a time, along with the ever-present threat that schools can suddenly close, just shut down. I think it's fairly understandable why there is such trouble with parents not prioritizing their children's school attendance and why homeschooling has ballooned 60%. Parents either do not see the value in, or they are desperately trying to protect their children from what the school experience has become. The way we rebuild a sense of safety and dependability is to give the children their childhoods back, and that cannot happen until this board chooses to leave COVID behind because COVID is not going to leave us. You see, the swine flu pandemic of 2009 was a variant of the granddaddy of them all. The technical name for the swine flu is H1N1, originally known as the Spanish Flu of 1918. 91 years later, it created another global pandemic, and 2009 wasn't the first time it came back as a pandemic, and in all likelihood, it won't be the last, despite H1N1 having been in every seasonal flu vaccine. COVID is not going anywhere, ever. Our only option is to give the children their childhoods back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lowen. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? At this time, we'll have board member response to public comment. Polly? Mrs. Murray?
I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Becker for speaking. I hope the county commissioners were listening. And to say thank you to the staff of Jonathan Hegger. I see a lot of you out there, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Anyone else? Okay. We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move on to new business. We have one item of new business under consideration this evening, and that involves the naming rights for Smithburg High School Stadium Project. We have Mr. Prue, our chief operating officer, with us this evening. Good evening, Mr. Prue.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. This evening, I present to you the first of the naming rights considerations from the Smithburg Athletic Booster Club in support of their public-private partnership and the naming rights agreement that was approved by the Board of Education in January of 2021. In your supporting documents, on the final page of the attachment, this first naming right is in red. It's naming right 13 for the stadium scoreboard. This will provide a sign, actually, that attaches to the base of the scoreboard, on the legs of the scoreboard. It is valued at $25,000 to First United Bank and Trust, with your approval, that is. The sign is simply a sign with their name and corporate logo, and it's a naming right for 15 years. Happy to answer any questions you may have about the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to for the approval of naming rights for the Smithburg Stadium Project.
Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions, any discussion?
The only one we're voting on right now is just for the First United one, right?
That's correct. None of the others have been allocated or received any kind of a commitment from the community at this point.
Perfect.
Well, they'll come forward as we have commitments.
Right.
I have one question. Mr. Prue, is this money paid upfront, or is it paid through payments?
If you note on the attachment on the funds collected, the date is 12/23, so First United has actually already made the check payment to the Booster Club. In some cases, it may be over a term of time, and that'll be noted. As the agreements get filled in, we will note that payment term for you on that final line of each grid.
So this doesn't always have to be the same? I mean, it could be through payments.
It could be.
Okay, all right.
Let me move to the vote. Voting for approval of the naming rights for the Smithburg Stadium Project, as described by Mr. Prue. All those in favor? All right, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go now to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Mr. Williams, members of the board. To begin with tonight, we're going to start with our math tutoring program. I asked the math team to come forward. I'm not sure who's presenting. It looks like Ms. Tyler and Ms. Folio are presenting tonight. I know they have a number of the other math team members there behind them. Much like the reading program, we're very excited about our tutoring program in elementary and secondary schools, kind of a new venture for us in the last year or so, and we're going to have an update tonight from staff. So with that, I'll turn to Ms. Tyler. Ms. Folio?
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Amy Tyler, Supervisor of Math and Science. With me this evening, I have Mrs. Angie Folio, one of our elementary math content specialists. And as Dr. Michael mentioned, behind me is the rest of our math content specialist team, as well as one of our elementary math tutors. Mr. Galawas is with us from Eastern Elementary this evening. So I thank all of them for joining us. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you about the work of our math tutors and the impact they're having on students in mathematics. All right, so the purpose of our math tutors is essentially to accelerate achievement in mathematics for students. We want to provide them with the opportunity to access grade-level instruction, and in doing that, we do have students who are behind in math or at risk of being behind in mathematics. And so our math tutors work to provide the most critical prerequisite skills for what students need to learn just in time for what they're learning in their appropriate grade-level or course-level mathematics class. So to do that, students are first assessed to determine who may already be behind in mathematics or have some skill gaps that we can address. From there, our math tutors provide targeted intervention supports that address those needs, and they progress monitor along the way to determine when to move forward, when they need more support, and so on. Our math tutors, we have 22 math tutor paraprofessionals with us right now, 17 of whom are working in our elementary schools. All of our elementary schools do have access to a math tutor this year in five, three, or two days a week. That's dependent upon data and need at each of those elementary schools. And we have five math tutors currently working, four in our in middle schools, and one working with Algebra I students at Williamsport High School. Our math tutors are primarily funded through grants. Prior to COVID, we had the TSI grant noted there on the screen that allowed 10 of our elementary tutors to work with grades K through 3. At the same time, we had a need in two of our middle schools, and two of those tutors are funded through the general fund and have remained as such. And through for with our recovery efforts since COVID, we have two additional grants that have allowed for the 10 additional tutors across middle schools, the one high school, and some additional elementary. Those funds allow for the math tutor salaries funded completely through those grants, as well as the materials that they use for their interventions. Our math tutors, as of the start of the winter break, have had the privilege of working with around 1,400 students in Washington County. That's about an average across our 22 tutors, around 64 students per tutor have been impacted by our math tutors. And those were excited that they've had the opportunity to do that and catch up. We do, we're able to impact that many students in math because we are working with students in small groups. So you'll see math tutors working with about two to four students at a time, and that's because we really depend on student-to-student conversation, student-to-student discussion, and that allows for our tutors to listen to the strengths of our students, allow them to hear what strategies students are coming to the table with, and allows tutors to make connections between what students are bringing to the table and where we need them to go. To make those connections, of course, that requires some specialized training for our tutors, and so we're able to do that through professional learning days, such as one coming up here next Monday. We'll be working with our math tutors that day, as well as job-embedded coaching that our math content specialists provide when they're out in our schools. Tutors are provided with research-based strategies that they use with students through specific interventions, as well as training on how to determine when a student is ready to move on to a new skill or a new strategy, when a student may need some additional support on a skill or strategy, and when a student is ready to exit working with the math tutor. So we do work with them there. As I mentioned before, our secondary tutors are specifically working on the most critical prerequisite skills for students to give them access to grade-level learning in grade 6, 7, 8, or in Algebra I at high school. And those most critical prerequisite skills for our elementary students, our team has identified for our math tutors to work with students on math fact fluency, in addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. Now, I want to be cautious here because we could think, okay, math fact fluency, well, let's see, I learned my math facts by memorizing some time tests and flashcards. That is not further from the truth for what our math tutors do. Research has shown that certainly not all students learn that way, and it's our vision for students to know and understand well beyond memorization. Our students, we want them to be critical thinkers and problem solvers of mathematics and beyond, certainly for problems yet to be seen in our world. And so as such, our math tutoring program in elementary is modeled that way, and our tutors are provided with training on specific, a specific progression of strategies that students learn to help master their math facts. That includes contexts that are familiar to elementary-age students and includes enjoyable practice with games, as well as that student-to-student interaction. And Mrs. Folio is going to provide you with just a couple of examples of what that looks like, as I know that is a different way of learning math facts than it was for me growing up.
So as Amy just shared, our math tutor's purpose is really to support students in that development of grade-level basic math fact fluency. And by fluency, you can see, we mean, what that means is that our students are able to use a variety of strategies to solve addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division problems efficiently, flexibly, accurately, so that when they're encountering problems, they can solve using those facts automatically. So our tutors, how this begins, is our tutors assess students one-on-one. And so they're giving given an assessment to find out what the students already know, right? So we don't need to backtrack and do business with facts that they have already mastered. We take them from where they are. And so once that has been established, these students are grouped in small groups with like peers who are working at the same place as they are, and they're provided 20-minute instructional sessions for that specific fact strategy. And so the students will move through each of the strategies in this manner. So you can see here, for each fact strategy, there are six sessions. And so our tutors engage students in a variety of experiences across these six sessions. They have opportunities to look at visual images. They have opportunities to engage with contextual problems. They have opportunities, lots of opportunities, you hear, to play games and engage in number talks. To the right there, you do see the specifics. You're wondering, what is a strategy? What makes a strategy for addition, subtraction? So to the right, you see the addition, subtraction strategies in this sequence that we follow. One of those strategies that you'll see there is called combinations for 10, and we're going to take a look at this. So here is a manipulative, so students will encounter. These are called connecting cubes. So what's really nice when thinking about the strategy, combinations for 10, students can visually see what those combinations for 10 are. So I can see in my connecting cubes, I see red cubes, I see white cubes. To help me understand 5 and 5, I can see 8 and 2. I can also see 7 and 3. So lots of ways that we can use these manipulatives to help us not just know, but also build that concrete understanding of what combinations for 10 means. Students also get opportunities to apply their strategies. Here you see a problem where, okay, Audrey has a pack of 10 markers. Some are blue, some are green. How many markers of each color could there be, right? So we get a variety, a variety of responses, so they're not just learning one combination for 10 in isolation, they're learning and exploring all the combinations for 10 within this problem. And the context is really driving. It's authentic, they can think about a box of markers, and they can also connect back to those images of connecting cubes, right? Because that's going to support them in that, in that solution there. Our math tutors, they report to us over and over again throughout our meetings and in many emails that they send us, that our students just love playing the games. And so these games provide the meaningful and enjoyable practice that I know I didn't receive in school. I received practice by skill and drill and memory, and rote memorization. So here, a game, again, for partners of 10, partners would play, they'd roll 10-sided die, and then they would, one partner would, would choose which die they want to use, and the other partner would say, well, how many, figure out how many more it's going to take to make 10, okay? And then they check themselves and, and play. So just lots of really wonderful opportunities, students are so excited when they get to play those games. I can't say enough about our math tutors, they really go above and beyond day in and day out. So to the point where we get these pictures where they are taking the initiative to celebrate and showcase the work of their students and the progress and growth that they're making, you'll see here two examples of bulletin boards that our math tutors made and sent us these pictures, really to support students in being competent mathematicians, and also building and fostering that positive math identity. So, we're going to take a step into and see firsthand, we have a video prepared this evening where we'll get to see a day in the life of what it looks like in action. And you will also get to hear from two of our math tutors, and they will describe their work and the impact of the program. In our video, you'll also hear from a principal, one lead teacher, and one classroom teacher who's just delighted, and not just the work that, that is happening in the math tutor program, but the way that the work is applied in her classroom.
The math tutoring program is so beneficial to the students, they're able to not only master those math facts, but also develop their thinking.
In my mind, the math tutor program is that targeted instruction, and we're really looking at what kids need and looking at individual responses and how we can make sure that we're providing that supplemental instruction.
We see 12 on the card, right?
We play lots of games, we look at image talks, we use manipulatives that the students might use in the classrooms. It really relates to real-life images, some of the image talks might include shoes or pencils or things that students are going to see in the classroom.
The program really does help them apply the skills, whereas in the past, when we were just memorizing facts, they, it was very hard for them to then transfer that knowledge to other concepts. Now students are seeing those particular problems in real-world word problems. So they're seeing, what is the application of those facts, and how might it appear in the real-world setting?
I have worked with specifically a second grader and a third grader, both of whom came into the program struggling with their, their basic math facts, and by the close of the program, they had completely mastered those facts. They had actually gone from really struggling to having the math facts mastered completely.
The math tutors have been great in that they send, usually it's a bi-weekly report to tell me what strategies they've been working on, so that I can then kind of piggyback on those strategies with my own small groups and really see how they're doing and how they're applying it in the classroom.
Throughout each strategy that we work with the children on, we assess them after the fact. So they're provided with additional math facts, and then at that point, we can see the growth that they've made from one strategy to the next.
I think one of the things that we also are seeing as a natural transfer has been that fact fluency is really improving, and we know that that's part of how kids are really going to apply and transfer their math knowledge when they're problem solving. So that's been an exciting outcome.
The biggest benefit I've seen is the self-confidence. It has raised the self-confidence exponentially. They like the small group setting and that they're able to really talk and communicate in a way that they don't feel that they're struggling in math. They feel like they're on the top of their game, and they're able to really come back with that positive attitude, and I just have seen such growth. You know, asking my kids, what's their favorite part of the day? It's math.
I think the takeaway is that this program is a way that we can fairly quickly give kids a lot of strength and a lot of skills and content and conceptual understanding that they need to be successful, not just here in elementary school, but in the years ahead. This is kind of the foundation, this creates the foundation that they need to be successful in future mathematics.
Okay, thank you, team. I'm sure they or their other teammates here would be glad to take any questions you might have. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our math tutors for the work that they're doing out in the schools. I do get the opportunity to see our tutors frequently out in the hallway or a small conference room or setting with individual students or two or three students. Thank you for the work that you do. And then also thank you to our leadership team, Amy, Angie, Amy, Mary Ann, Erica, you know, Brittany, others that have worked to lead not only our teachers, but also our tutoring program. Angie, I can't remember how many years ago it was that I walked into a workshop, I even think it was up on the third floor in the corner room up there, and Angie was leading the workshop, and the kindergarten teachers, now, these weren't kindergarten students, these were the teachers, but they were talking about the curriculum. And then I heard the word that they used during the workshop, used out by kindergartners, attributes of a button, attributes of a button, used by kindergartners, as we've talked about mathematics. And that has stuck with me for five or six years, when I heard kindergartners with a whole box of buttons, you know, square ones and triangle ones, and two-hole and three-hole and whatever, cut, different colors, and they were taught, using the words, attributes of a button. I don't think people realize how much our mathematic curriculum has pushed down to younger grades and what the expectations are. For some of us, it's been around forever, the functional math tests in ninth grade pushed to sixth grade and eventually eliminated because we're doing that type of material now probably by third grader before. So this type of tutoring work to help these children catch up and keep up is extremely important. So board members, the team would be available for questions, but again, I want to thank our leadership team, and I want especially tonight to thank and recognize our math tutors. Questions for the team?
Mr. Staudtler?
What factors enter into the placement of these tutors? I assume they're, they're at all Title I schools, but I noticed Williamsport High School, for example, is the only high school that has a tutoring program. What, what factors enter into those decisions?
Well, initially, we really wanted to look at being as proactive as possible. So initially, we started all, the majority of our math tutors at the elementary levels. And as you noted, they are, in elementary, every one of our elementary schools does have access to a math tutor. Right now, some of them, however, based on data, so based on past MCAP or historical data, as well as in elementary school, we do have a universal screener that provides us with information on every child of who may be at, at risk of or already behind in mathematics. So we do have that available to us that helped us to place the tutors this year in particular. So again, at the elementary school, some schools see the tutor twice a week, some three times a week, and some five days a week, our Title I schools, most of them have a, all of them have a full-time tutor five days a week, and some of them have a tutor and a half as well. Our, our middle schools, the four, again, the four based on data, city middle schools are, who have the tutors there. And at the high school level, we, we really wanted to explore what a math tutor looks like at the high school level in mathematics, which took, which takes a certain structure of the schedule to be able to allow for that math tutor to pull and have those small groups at specific times of the day. And Williamsport High School was able to put together a schedule that allowed for that math tutor this year. So we're excited to, to find out the impact of that tutor across the entire year and perhaps explore adding math tutors at other high schools in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a question, but I was, would like to say thank you for making those children look like they were having so much fun, the math tutors. You did a great job, they looked engaged, and it looked fun. So as a hard subject for many people, you made it look easy, so congratulations and thanks for that. That was, that was really wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next part of my report this evening, the conversation with Mr. Choudry, our state superintendent, he's offered the Western Maryland counties an opportunity to consider using virtual snow days. I don't know if it's something we're going to do or not, but I've asked Dr. Willow, and I see Dr. Pugh is available as well, to just to describe what our plan would be. Part of his requirement to submit a plan for virtual snow days is to talk about it, does not need to be approved by the board, but to discuss what it would look like with the board publicly. You know, our plan at this point is after this public presentation tomorrow, we'll submit our plan to Mr. Choudry. I don't know whether it'll be approved or not, and I particularly don't know if we'd actually use the plan or not, but it's something we want to have in our toolbox in event we would start to get into extremely bad weather and start using up a lot of our snow days. So, Dr. Willow?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Good evening, President Williams, members of the board. As Dr. Michael pointed out, MSD has opened up a pathway for local school systems to submit a plan that would allow us to use virtual school days during inclement weather. There are some requirements that have to be part of our plan submitted to MSD for approval, and I'm going to go through them so that the board and public are aware of those requirements. There would have to be a minimum of four hours of synchronous instruction for all students each virtual inclement weather day. Attendance would be taken for all students during the virtual inclement weather day. There would have to be opportunities for students to make up work missed during virtual inclement weather days. The plan has to be posted on the local, our local website. The link would be provided to MSD, and as Dr. Michael shared, it has to be presented at a publicly accessible local school system board meeting. In addition, we would be responsible for providing accommodations to students with IEP, IEPs. We would be responsible for making sure that all students have devices, which we're well situated to do since we are one-to-one pre-K through 12th grade. And again, in some cases where internet could possibly be an issue, we would have to allow students to have the opportunity to make up any work that was missed. Dr. Michael alluded that this is not something that we would necessarily use, and I think that's important to note. This is one more tool in our toolbox. Right now, we've used one inclement weather day. We have six built into our calendar. Our last day, if we use nothing else, no more snow days for the remainder of the year, would be June 7th. But for every snow day that we use going forward, it would be adding another day to June. We see this being used potentially when there is a significant amount of snow in the forecast. It could be something that we could call ahead of time, and that if we were going to be out multiple days, think back to some of those storms we've had in the past that have kept us out for a week at a time. Perhaps the scenario would be a traditional snow day on the first day, but after that second day and third day, we might use this virtual plan. Again, it's trying to balance, we know that the, the challenges of virtual days, we remember that from last year, but we also know that we learned a lot. We also know the challenges that can come with instruction late into June. And so again, it's trying to balance, you know, when we want to use these days versus how many days that we would use at the end of the year. If we don't apply, we have no option to use it. By applying, all we're doing is asking for permission to use it if we need it, and I think that's important to note.
Dr. Willow, I don't know if there's...
I have a question. Dr. Willow, so we have a virtual snow day, and we're on, online learning for four hours. Does that make up one day?
Yes, it has to be, as part of the plan, a minimum of four hours. The models that we drew up were instruction in the morning up until lunch, and then office hours and one-on-one and tutoring possibilities in the afternoon.
Thank you.
So again, as Dr. Willow mentioned, this is just a possibility. We're going to submit this plan tomorrow. I don't know how quick we'll hear back from Mr. Choudry. And again, I know he's very adamant about making sure that every child has an opportunity to learn every day. That doesn't always happen in June, it doesn't always happen every day right now. We're only running about 85% attendance or less. But our goal would be just to have this in our toolbox again, probably is that only when we really can anticipate we're going to be out, and then probably for a number of days in a row. I would anticipate the next several days we use would be our traditional snow days. So I would not see, even if we had this approved, it being used anytime soon, unless like we had in the 90s, is what I recall, 92 and 94, we had a couple of times where we were out for at least five days. Eventually, we came back in conditions we normally wouldn't even go in, but I think everybody was tired of having children at home at that point, and so...
And Dr. Michael, I might add that this plan is only good for this year.
That was the other thing with Mr. Choudry, it wasn't a long-term plan. I know a lot of the superintendents have been advocating to do this indefinitely, but that's not the nature of this. Mr. Choudry has high expectations for the use of these days, and he's only been allowing it for the three Western Maryland counties for, for, just for the current school year. Thank you, Dr. Willow. The next thing I wanted to do was update the board. We're going to change our dashboard where we report our COVID cases a little bit. You know, we've been listing our quarantines and things like that. Right now, with the five-day rule that we're using in Washington County, by the time we find out a student is positive, we do contact tracing. A lot of times, our quarantines are trailing a couple of days by the time we get those reported. So we're going to itemize them and list them out by school and keep them updated. They'll be differentiated by staff and by students per school, and they're generally reported the very next business day. So that is very difficult to read up there, but you can see, we have a list of schools, and you can just see, it'll, it'll record the number of students and staff. So a new look to our COVID dashboard site. If you had a particular school, you know, Boonsboro Elementary, and there was four cases, you'd see Boonsboro Elementary, Boonsboro Elementary, Boonsboro Elementary, Boonsboro Elementary. Now, I think you will just see Boonsboro Elementary with a four instead of it listed four times and needing to add that up. So we've looked at other sites, and we've kind of, you know, explored what they're using, and this seems to be effective. So for people that are concerned, we're not sharing this information, it's readily available every day, we update it every business day. So the information that come in are Saturday and Sunday, even though the COVID response team works, we don't record to Saturday and Sunday until today, or in this case, Saturday, Sunday, Monday maybe until today. So one business day afterward, after we find out about the positive case, it'll be recorded on the site. It also listed for past weeks and cumulative to date, so just a variety of information there. I would like to take this opportunity while we're talking about COVID to thank our team out there, ESP, teachers, administrators. We continue to move forward, we've been hovering, you know, 28 to 32% in positivity now for a couple of weeks. Our number of cases per 100,000, they do that cumulative number, we've been hoping to get under 100, under 50 at some point, so we can get to a point where we can make a different decision about masks. Unfortunately, we are like 1450. At one point last week, we did have a couple of days, we started to decline after 21 straight days of that seven-day, you know, number being added together. So we're optimistic, we're going to turn the corner. I did, I didn't see today's state number, but I saw the state, at least there were last four or five days declined from 29% to 20%. Unfortunately, we have not followed that pattern yet, but I'm optimistic that we will. We continue to move forward. Again, all credit to ESP, our teachers and our administrators for keeping us going. As the board knows, I spend a lot of my evenings and opportunities when I can to be out, not only in schools, but also nighttime activities. You know, everybody's making everything work. Is that the North-South game over the weekend, large crowd, you know, people well behaved, people were generally wearing their masks up perfectly, but, you know, very cooperative. Smithburg game, the kids were all in camo, a large student section, probably 100, 100-plus children cheering for their, their team there at their school. I attended a bocce ball game, I attended track meet out at HCC where I talked to Earl Stoner a little bit about the pandemic. You know, everybody's doing everything they can to keep us going. Like Mrs. Murray, I didn't see it, did you say Montgomery County has gone out virtually? Or just some schools?
More schools.
More schools. I know they had a number of schools out. PG, I think, just came back. More schools. I know they had a number of schools out. PG, I think, just came back, and they've been out since before the winter break. A lot of schools have closed, any number of schools within their system. But Washington County continues to march forward. We're working hard to keep our kids safe and our staff safe, and we just appreciate everybody's efforts. And credit to the board for their leadership, and again, to all of our ESP teachers and administrators for making it work for our students and keeping us in person. So I thank everybody for that. Ms. Williams, that's all that I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Next on our agenda, we have personnel actions. We have Dr. Pugh, our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership presenting.
Good evening, and Mrs. Williams, members of the board. Dr. Michael, as discussed earlier in closed session today, there are a number of staff changes before you for your consideration. And at this time, I ask for your approval of personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion, please?
President Williams?
We've to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, January 18, 2022, as presented in closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Zetmyer. Any questions for Dr. Pugh? All right. We're moving to approve, or we're moving, we're voting to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, January 18, 2022, as discussed previously in closed session. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous. Personnel actions are approved. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Can't speak. Okay, we'll move on to reports to the board. We have with us our legislative representative, Mrs. Artif Cade, and she will be briefing us on the 2022 Maryland Legislative Session. Good evening, Mrs. Cade. Mrs. Cade, we've set aside 15 minutes for the briefing.
Yes, ma'am.
It's good to see you. We're happy you're here.
It's nice to be here, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I'll try and stay within my 15 minutes.
Thank you.
First, let me say that the MAB intern this year is a graduate of Washington County School System, Alexa Thomas. I believe she graduated from Williamsport. Excuse me. Yes, from Williamsport. And she's doing a fine job for Mako, so you can be very proud of her. The tone, there's a session going on, and it's 90 days, and we're just a few days in. So there's going to be a lot happening. The tone of the session is very much focused on the upcoming elections. People have to file for office by mid-February, and so there's a lot of decision-making going on relative to that. People can't be fundraising during that time, so that calms the fundraisers down. But there's a lot of talk, of course, about everything. Legislative redistricting is certainly a matter of interest and concern as being dealt with right away. And I think your maps didn't change hugely out here. They divided my district right down the street, right across, you know, right in the middle of our neighborhood, right in the middle of our community, into two different legislative districts. But I guess we'll have to live with it. There are lots of, there's lots of money, which is a nice thing for the legislature to have to face. And, but it's going to be very interesting when the governor's budget comes in in the next few days, and to see whether those funds are being, a lot of the funds are being applied for things like student counts in farms, children, and so forth, where there, you have lost numbers in various categories, but they could go back to older numbers and hold you harmless and make a lot of difference in the budget money that's available for you. So there's a lot of looking at what that budget is going to be. There are going to be a lot of retirees from the legislature. Maggie McIntosh, who's Chair of Appropriations, has been there forever, as far as I'm concerned. Your Senator Edwards, who's been there forever and ever, and Senator Kelly, who's my age, and chairs the Finance Committee, and a number of others. So there's going to be big changes between now and next year. So all that's kind of setting the tone. There's obviously COVID issues, and the House and Senate are all seated in their regular places. They're acting on the floor, but all their committee meetings are still, at this time, being held virtually. And people who are going to testify have to get the testimony in two days ahead, which is very complicated and hard in many situations. There's a lot of interest in whether recreational marijuana will be approved. There are some law enforcement issues, et cetera. So there's a lot going on. Education is not quite as high on the list as it has been in recent years because the blueprint was passed last year. But the blueprint is not expected to get a lot of changes made in it this year. We don't expect a big change bill on the blueprint. The Accountability Board of the, under the blueprint, which is something very new, has been appointed, but the governor has not released their funds so that they can operate, so that they can't go ahead and hire people to do the work and to get, receive the reports and react and create the responses that they're supposed to be doing. So that's kind of an interesting thing. We'll see where that one goes. The Senate Committee that deals with education is, has made it clear they don't expect to make any big changes in the blueprint. But they also say that they're not going to be messing with virtual learning in this time period. Anything they do about virtual learning this year, they have said, is going to be about the future of virtual learning and as it's being looked at in many communities. The House Ways and Means Committee, which is where most of our education bills go in the House, has a new chairman. We are very sad to see the former chairman leave, but Delegate Adderberry is now the chairman. She was the vice chairman of judicial proceedings when we tried to get the changes made to the reportable offenses law. So that, we haven't had a warm and fuzzy relationship with her, although we've been very civil and very, and our meetings have been with her in the past have been very, very friendly, even if we disagreed. MAB and PZAM together have initiated regular meetings of the blueprint coordinators. Dr. Willow has been attending those and contributing to those. And now, the state MSD has agreed to have a once-a-month meeting with all of those blueprint coordinators. But we've also established focus groups, you know, on each of the subject areas. And this is generated out of MAB and PZAM leadership. And I think that's been very helpful as we're trying to figure out what some of these things mean, and some of the reports that have to come in, and so forth. So that kind of gives you a sense of the feel of the legislature. We have a number of bills that we're concerned about. A lot of them are bills that we have heard year after year. One is the seizure action plans, excuse me, no, I'm going to start with something different. One on pedestrian safety plans that you'd be required to do if you're in, doing a school in an area over 10,000. And it involves, you're making a plan about how kids walk to school, get to school, et cetera. And yet, and you do it with the transportation people and so forth. But it has no real teeth to it. You don't have any authority over the properties off of your school grounds and so forth. So it's kind of, it's kind of a legislation without really any teeth. For the third year, I think this is, the sexual assault clarifies that in grades six through eight, the curriculum must include a focus on awareness and prevention of human sex trafficking. And these are, this is probably already covered in most curriculum, but this is somebody's idea that this should be focused on at that particular age. Senate Bill 749 calls that a person in authority over a minor, and it requires, and it includes school personnel, and you've had this law in effect. It defines what sexual contact is inappropriate and so forth. But this bill expands it to include all the recreational programs and camps and so forth. And some of these, of course, are on your school properties, so you have to have some responsibility for making certain that the personnel doing these programs is, are aware of these laws and so forth. Sort of a new, well, it was in last year, but the whole idea of mental health absences has gotten a lot of attention. And that's partly because it's just gotten, as you know, so much through COVID, so much attention on the mental health needs of students. The way this law is written, it would sort of allow a parent and child to have an extended mental health absence without requiring any documentation. So there are two ways to correct this. And this is, in many of these bills, there's ways to make them better, and MAB is proposing amendments, as PZAM. But some believe that the word, that illness includes mental illness. And if illness includes mental illness, you already have the three-day, I believe it's three-days absence. They have to have a doctor's note to return to school. But if instead, mental illness is distinguished from illness, you'd have to amend the bill to define limited absence. Otherwise, there would be sort of a blanket opportunity for a student to be out on mental illness for as long as they want it to be out. And I don't think that was what was intended by the, by the person who developed the bill. But, and I think they will agree to making that amendment. Last year, we talked about seizure action plans, and it was a bill that was going to make everybody get trained in seizure, in providing medication and so forth for seizure. But now, it's required that it would be the nurse would be defining probably herself and/or himself, and one other teacher or one other personnel, and/or it could be two other people, not including the nurse, who would be trained and to administer seizure rescue medicine. But all personnel would be trained to recognize seizures and to provide direct, that they be, there'd be follow-up. The parents of seizure-prone children are required to bring, to provide the school with medicine, written documentation that they could, that the medicines can be given and so forth. And there also is, very importantly, a clause that says that there's no liability on personnel for their attempts to provide seizure relief. And that is key because apparently seizures can vary dramatically from one sort of seizure to another, and your treatment of them can be very different. And you could be trying to do something good and, in fact, be creating harm. So that's a very important clause in that, in that bill. Under new legislation, there are a couple bills that are sort of interesting. House Bill 147 is called the Farms and Family Fund. It's a pilot grant program, and it's voluntary, but it would reward getting local products into the school lunch programs. And there would be a payment to the schools of, it said 20 cents per meal for using pilot, for using local products. It's something that hasn't really been fully developed or defined yet. And it's a four-year pilot grant program that may be of interest. And secondly, the follow-up to a program that was suggested last year to reduce and compost school waste, this, again, is a voluntary program and has to do with recycling unused foods to other agencies and so forth, and providing milk in bulk rather than in cartons. And, but everything would have to be documented by how much savings there was in the waste that the school was providing or was causing. And currently, the bill is, says that a school can apply or a system can apply. And of course, we would think, and we would ask that it certainly, the school system should have to apply maybe on behalf of particular schools. We always have some curriculum mandates that are suggested. Some of them are about very important and good things. As this year, there's a bill in to expand the American history curriculum to recognize contributions of all minority groups. And certainly, MAB and PZAM agree with the intent, but historically and consistently have opposed bills which create curriculum mandates. We feel that that's something to be left to school systems and the state system. Secondly, the, your delegates' chimes bill for the publication of school library catalogs that would call for the content of school libraries to be posted annually on the website and parents notified of the link to be used. And again, again, this is something that is pretty much already done, as I understand, and whether it's seen as a mandate, and see where that one goes. There's one that I can't understand, and I understand Mr. Stauffer asked a lot of questions about this at the MAB meeting, about crimes on school grounds, and it says, who's exempted from what. I'll try and tell you next time what it means. It's a bill that is very confusing to me. And that there's certain controversy about, and certain understandings that who should be included in what and so forth. So I apologize for not being able to give you full explanation on that. There's one that's House Bill 24, the Cybersecurity Scholarship Program, and it expands and allows repayment options for cybersecurity training if the employees are in, work in Maryland agencies. I've missed one about cybersecurity. There's also, oh, yeah. There's a bill about cybersecurity guide, a guide and training. And they've worked on this bill over the interim. And it's a training, it would provide training course for public schools on internet, social media, and technology usage. But then there's also training for parents, for school employees, and various courses being developed and certifications being developed, and the possibility that even some of these certifications could, if a student followed the curriculum for, that might be able to get credit for taking this course. So again, it's on a very broad level at this point. It's not clear quite who gets It's not clear quite who gets what training, but it goes all the way up through university training. So, but it's clearly something that is of concern and interest to the legislature, and I think might be worked on and moved ahead. The, there's a House Bill 201, which calls, requires that all high schools would be required to have a voter registration drive each year, and in that drive, anybody who's going to be 18 by the time of the election can serve as a volunteer. We're always interested in SROs, and I had a very nice talk with the head of your SROs for your shares department as I was coming in tonight. Last year's bill that we supported says that the SRO may not unilaterally enforce discipline-related school policies, rules, regulations, and procedures. And we were very much in favor of that. That is how you operate and how, it's how most of the SROs operate. They don't do your school discipline, they do other, other matters. But just like last year, they've piled other things into this bill, and the rest of the bill calls for extreme disaggregation of the data provided to the state on discipline-related data by grade, rate, grade, race, ethnicity, disability, socioeconomic status, gender, and in cases of disproportional, disproportionate disciplinary practices, schools where it's high-suspending schools, the, the requirements for the disaggregation are, are at their most severe. So it's really a pretty complicated bill. And again, it, it is not, it doesn't, that part doesn't deal with SROs at all. The SRO program, we support as being a program that school systems can choose to use and that has guidelines around it. It's not your school safety officer and so forth. So I think that that's hopefully pretty well accepted now across the state, but we don't know what's coming in, and we're only one week into this session. There are two bills, three bills of special interest. One of them, Senate Bill 40 and House Bill 68, have to do with the IAC, and it relates to the Built to Learn funding. And I'm going to read, it's just really one sentence. The IAC shall consider systemic renovation projects as eligible for funding regardless of the cost of the project, which means that you can apply for small projects from that funding. As you recall, I believe it's about 11% of the money goes to 17 of the counties, which represent 25% of the population. We're in that crowd. But interestingly, Charles County, who's the next biggest county after us, I think, but kind of are equal, has already applied for three projects under, using the Built to Learn money. So it's, we, and in that pool of money, there's no ratio of, of any particular county getting any particular percentage of it. So it's something to be watched, whether you have any projects that may be coming forth, since you can use it for pre-construction costs, and, and now, if this bill goes through for systemic renovation projects of any cost, it is something that I think you'll want to keep a close eye on. And then we get to reportable offenses. And as you recall, those of you who've been around for several years, we had legislation to try and clarify that when a child is in juvenile services custody, because they have committed a reportable offense back at their home school, and then they've been taken into the custody of the juvenile services, they've been in a juvenile services facility, and they've come out, and they've come into a group home and are coming into your schools from that group home, we were not getting the information from juvenile services about what reportable offense that child had committed and why they were, basically, why they were in this juvenile services cycle. We were, we tried very hard, and we had people from Montgomery County testifying with us at some point, but it was seen to be, it was taken still to be school-to-prison pipeline. And we were trying to say, you're coming out of that pipeline back into your school system. We were not successful, but Delegate Parrott has again put in the legislation, which we had in the second year, and it has gone to the Judiciary Committee. On the other hand, House Bill 146, which is sponsored by Delegate Moon, who is the vice chair of Judiciary, and Delegate Atterbury, who was the vice chairman and is now chairman of Ways and Means, have a bill in which really totally guts the whole reportable offenses bill. The reportable offenses bill really was helpful to school systems and is helpful to school systems in that it required that law enforcement notify a school almost immediately of any arrests that were made of their students. So if you have a bad weekend and kids get picked up for all kinds of things, the school was notified if they were carrying guns or if they were, you know, there were, there were just a big, long list of things. Some of them more moderate than others, but a lot of them fairly violent things. And so the school then, if, if they chose or they felt it necessary, and again, went to the principal and the student services people, not to the public. But the kids probably already know who got arrested over the weekend, don't they? I'm not sure. But that helps the school then take action if a student needs to be removed from the setting or be given opportunities for counseling and various things. This bill, which interestingly has gone to Ways and Means, where Delegate Atterbury is now the chairman, totally guts the reportable offenses bill. It now says that, not that the law enforcement people report the arrest to the school, it says that after a student who's been arrested is adjudicated or convicted, which is sometimes quite, quite, quite a long time, that then the state's attorney may, not must, may tell the school. And they've also cut out many of the offenses that were covered by the reportable offense bill. So it, it will be very interesting to see where this bill goes. A similar bill was put in last year and really didn't move at all. This bill now with that sponsorship will certainly get attention and certainly have a lot of lively hearings. It might move, it might be amended or not. It might move in the House. I would think when it gets over to the Senate, it would probably have a pretty hard time. But it clearly is one that, that people should be concerned about because it does change a tool that school systems have found to be useful and effective. Now, apparently, there have been some cases where it has been misused, overused by some school systems or schools, individual schools, and to the point that, that there is a concern. So I'm sure in the hearings, we'll hear lots of interesting situations, pro and con about the reportable offenses bill. It's a tool that, that MAB has been very supportive of and that we would hate to lose as a, something in your, in your opportunities to provide good attention to your student's safety and your student's well-being, and to both to the, the accused and also to the other students. So those are the bills that, am I within my 15 minutes? Those are the bills that I bring to you today. May I answer any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Cade. Colleagues, do you have any questions, Mrs. Cade?
I don't have any question. I have a couple of comments. I want to thank Mrs. Cade for her long distinguished service to this board and this school system. For those of you who don't know Mrs. Cade's background, she's very knowledgeable, and other board members and I have been with her on MAB legislative day. She has contacts on both sides of the aisle. She's held various positions, working with the General Assembly through her long career. Her late husband was a distinguished state senator for many, many years and so forth. So, and she's a member of a group called the Green Streeters, which I asked one time when I first came on the MAB Legislative Committee as this board's representative, why are you called the Green Streeters? Well, it was some location on Green Street, apparently.
Where we used to be.
Where they met and so forth. But it's a distinguished group of staff members, basically, and lobbyists who work with MAB and so forth and all that. And I hope my board members, fellow board members, will avail themselves of looking at the documents that I forwarded to you that, you know, I try to read and get comfortable with before I go to those meetings and so forth, but it's just, that's why I don't make a report sometimes. It's hard to condense a two-hour meeting into a couple of minutes or so, this type of thing. So, and I'll say this last time, I'm particularly glad, again, and I've said this many times through the years, that this state legislature, General Assembly, only meets 90 days because due to that, some bills get pigeonholed in committee and never get out, and that's a good thing sometimes because some of the things that come through the state legislature about public education are detrimental to public education.
Mr. Stauffer, anyone else? Mrs. Cade, thank you for coming up. We hope you have a safe trip back this evening.
Thank you, and it's good to see you all. And anytime, well, we, we can go in the buildings now, and so if you're in and coming to Annapolis, and if you want to, I can try and arrange to take some of you to this or that. I don't know that MAB Day is going to be anything but virtual this year. I don't know.
I think they're still working.
Yeah. Figuring it out. But I'm happy to host any of you who want to come and see what it's really like down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cade. Okay, at this time, we'll go to Board Member Committee Reports, and we'll begin with Curriculum Instruction Committee.
Our next meeting is here, February 28th at 1:30.
Mrs. Williams, thank you. Facilities will be meeting on the 27th at 10:00 a.m.
Anything, Finance?
Nothing new to report at this time.
Thank you. Human Resources?
Met Tuesday, January 11th. I just want to give a little update. It was nice to have my new committee members with me, Mr. Gesford and Mr. Evans, and Lindsay Dar gave a teacher staffing update, Sandy Hammond gave an ESP staffing update, Regina Keller an A&amp;S staffing update, Tim Haynes talked about recruitment and retention, and substitute teacher update, the plans they have for recruitment, and the ESP of the Year Award is, I think, I think this is a tentative date, but hoping to have it on Thursday, February 24th, 5:00 p.m. here. So, and our next meeting will be April 12th, here, I'm not sure what's room, but at 10:00 in the morning.
All right, thank you. Policy Review and Development?
Policy meets next Tuesday, the 25th, at 11:30. One of the biggest, big topics will be the bullying policy that we're reviewing after the state released their model policy, and we had a good work session about that today, and we'll continue to discuss it in our policy meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Gupta, anything you'd like to report regarding student government?
Student government is having its General Assembly. I have to double-check the date. I believe it's next Saturday. I'll tell Debbie to put it on your calendars. We're going to be talking about mental health, bullying, and how to advocate as a student. So very fun stuff, and I highly recommend all of the board members to come.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to miscellaneous business, and we have one thing under miscellaneous business, and that's future agenda items, and you have a rather lengthy list. I'm only going to speak to what we have coming up in February. We have a work session coming up on February 1st that is the superintendent's draft budget. And later that evening, we will adopt or not adopt the superintendent's draft budget as the board's budget. That evening, we'll have a community schools update and a spotlight on the apprenticeship program, and a report regarding first semester attendance. Also that evening, we'll have presentation of a single audit report, and I have here that the Legislative Response Team will be reporting with Board Committee Report. So that means that the Legislative Response Team will be meeting to be able to make a report. So that, that's interesting. So I'll leave it at that first meeting in February. There are additional items that are there for your review, and I remind you that if you have any topic that you would like to see on a future agenda, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know, and we will take care of getting that on a future That brings us to Board Member Comments. Would you like to begin, Dr. Zettmeyer?
I would love to. Yesterday, hopefully you paused to remember the man that we had a holiday to celebrate. He said darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate can't drive out hate, only love can do that. He directed an assembly of 250,000 people peaceably and delivered the "I Have a Dream" speech. He was the most visible leader in the civil rights movement and a world figure until his assassination in 1968. He conferred with presidents, was awarded five honorary degrees, and was named Man of the Year by Time Magazine in 1963. At 35, he was the youngest man ever to win the Nobel Peace Prize and immediately gave the money to further civil rights. I think I like his definition of education best. Intelligence plus character equal the goal of true education. This man lived his words. Faith is taking the first step even when you can't see the whole staircase.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Mr. Evans?
I'll, I'll leave it at that. That was well said.
Mr. Gesford?
Nothing for me tonight.
Mr. Stauffer?
I'll clear.
Mr. Bigford?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Mr. Gupta?
Nothing for me.
Dr. Michael, do you have any parting words?
I think we have all-county orchestra this weekend, so if you want to enjoy a good concert, middle school concert, I think it's at 6:00 o'clock at North High, and high school's at 7:30. It's always an outstanding, outstanding performance by both groups.
Okay, so if there's nothing further, we'll adjourn.
Okay, so if there's nothing further, we'll adjourn. Thank you for a great day of meeting.